I'd now like to call this October 3, 2013, Cookville City Council meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
No changes.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September 19, 2013. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Item 3, set a date November 7, 2013, for a public hearing on ordinance 131015, closure and abandonment of a portion of Laurel Avenue located between West 7th and West 8th Streets, and declaring it a surplus. Also, item 4, set a date November 7, 2013, for a public hearing on ordinance 131016, the RAO redevelopment area overlay zoning for University Square Phase 2, which includes the following properties: 345 through 365 West 7th Street, 712 through 716 Laurel Avenue, 350 through 364 West 8th Street, and 721 Chestnut Avenue. Also, item 5, set a date November 7, 2013, for a public hearing on ordinance 131017, which is another RAO redevelopment area overlay zoning for 423 and 429 West Broad Street and 116 and 118 Chestnut Avenue. We have a motion for approval on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? I do want to point out the fact that we are, we do have two REO requests. I don't know how many we've had now since we've passed that, but probably four, five, maybe?
This is at least the third.
At least the third, okay. Anyway, glad to see people are taking advantage of that, helping.
I like the way, Mr. Mayor, I like the way we're, I like the way we're not really having to discuss this. It's something we're just letting, just pull through and get things done.
Yeah.
And we've talked about this a lot, so I really appreciate that we're, we keep doing this, so.
All right.
Good stuff.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the new business. Item 6, consider awarding bid for construction of a new animal shelter facility. I didn't know it was coming up. Sponsor, City Manager Jim Shipley.
Mayor and Council, this is, first slide is a rendering of the pet campus. The building there is in the gray. The plans are, at some point, to build a driveway around the house, parking by the barn, and the barn is to be used as a disaster rescue facility at some point. Two dog parks on the facility. Next slide. That's a rendering. Does not have the bench with me and the dog on it. I know you did. I know you did. Gail, if you'd go back one slide, I'd like to... Yeah. Behind the house, the parking area and the parking area by the barn, I'm going to present as two alternates. We do not plan to build a driveway all around the house, but just to get enough parking to the dog park. So you'll know what I'm talking about when I get to the two alternates. Alternate 1 and 2. We'll come down just about even with the south side of the house for parking, and then we'll have the driveway and the parking by the barn. Yeah, right there. Okay, Gail. Yes. Total estimated cost of the facility, I got by adding back all the donations that have been made so far to this facility. Total estimated cost is 2.1 million. Donated materials so far, $252,854. Donated services, $158,500. For a contract amount, which was the bid of $1,782,200. Now, the two alternates that I talked about, alternate 1 and alternate 2, both estimated to cost about $13,000, and I did add 2.68 percent contingency into the bid amount, or to the bond amounts. There is a 3 percent contingency in the contract now, so with that, plus the 2.68, we'll have close to a 6 percent contingency for stuff that happens that you don't know is going to happen. Total net estimated cost of $1,855,900. And estimate for Ms. Mary Johnson and her firm of Michael Brady to inspect the construction while it's in progress, $40,000. And then you back out the donated cash that we've received. Biggest part of that is the Sawyer Trust, which was $400,000. Some interest that we've earned on that, and some other cash donations. That gives us a net bond issue needed of $1,400,000. And I think the bid tab is next, yes. We received four bids, the lowest bid being TU Parks Construction Company out of Chattanooga. Has been checked out by the architectural firm. They have a, supposed to be a fine reputable company. And when you take their base bid of $1,782,200, if you approve the two alternates of $13,000 each, and then the 2.68 percent contingency, it brings the total amount to approve of And I would like to sincerely thank the Friends Group, most, a lot of you are here. You have gone out and drummed up a lot of donations. And it's Michael Brady and Mary Johnson with Michael Brady. I thank you for all your, you've donated a lot of services to this project also. It's been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of persistent ladies and gentlemen that have pushed for it. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Counsel, discussion?
This is a city project, and for the group that have been really pushing this, this has been a long time coming. I guess this goes back possibly three councils back. It is with my great pleasure that I'm going to vote for this, because your time has come, and we're going to have a great facility, it can be an asset to our community. And I think you'll be really successful with this project. And I appreciate the work you've done in the past, laying the groundwork. It's made it much easier for us to look at this project and pass this and get it started. Thank you.
I can only second what Jim says about that. This is something that I've always wanted to see happen, and I'm glad that we're taking this step forward, going to make sure it happens, and, you know, you've worked with that facility for so long, and you've tied things together, held it together, and the community wants this. And I'm also pleased to see the beginning of this, so that we can see it come to fruition.
Since we started talking about this, I've been asking some people in the community how they felt about the animal shelter, and the overwhelming majority were for it, and which helped me make my decision also, although I love cats and dogs anyway, but I feel like that everybody needs to be responsible for them, and we shouldn't need an animal shelter, but that's not the case. But, yes, I think it's going to be a good project, and looking forward to barking the park on Saturday.
Oh, yeah, I am too, 11 o'clock. I guess we're just going down the line. Let me give you kind of a heads up here. I was, I was in the work session, I was pretty much the nervous Nellie with all this, and let me give you kind of a reason, the reason why. I'm going to vote for this. I mean, it's, it's, I agree with all my, my council members in that this is a long time coming. Those of you who don't know me, I've sat on the county commi, I sat on the county commission for a long time, and we were part, we've been partners with the city. As a county commissioner, I was partners, I partnered with the city council in order to make this, the animal shelter, the best it could be. There were some rough spots, as you guys well remember. And I guess the reason why I was a nervous Nellie is because, as, as, as a city, the way I perceive this, we're kind of being the torchbearers when it comes to this. We're, we, I had a little problem with us going ahead with this, approving, approving this, and kind of getting this all set up to go ahead, which my council members felt like that that was very important. I did feel like, that's where I differed at, I did feel like, from other council members, that we should wait and give the county commission an opportunity to participate in, in this project, because it, this is a project, it's not, it's not a City of Cookville project. This is a regional project, okay? And you guys know that, absolutely. However, I, I was kind of outvoted with that, and I respect my council member's decision on that. And I guess if I was going to be a tough guy, I would vote, I would vote against this, but I'm not. I mean, we just, this is, again, a long time coming. I've watched, I've watched this animal shelter grow from nothing, from absolutely nothing, makeshift, just trying to find space somewhere to, to state-of-the-art facility, and I'm going to vote for this. But I did want to make sure that everybody knew that I wanted to let the county commission have the opportunity to participate as much as they could. But my thanks to all the, to all the animal lovers out there that have committed, committed not only, not only cash, but their time, which, when it comes to, as you guys know, as Mr. Shipley knows, that, that ends up being some of the biggest costs of all, those labor costs. So, thank you so much for your time and your effort with this. I'm going to vote for it, and thank you, guys, for being here and your commitment to this, this community and this project getting done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I did want to point out that we, of course, we have officially sent letters to the county commission, just telling them the reason we're, we're moving ahead with this is, we still want them to be partners, and we feel like they will be. We don't, we don't feel like that's going to be an issue. It's, we, we want to get the dirt moving before the weather changes on us too much, because we're all excited about this. I mean, I think everybody, you can tell that from everybody up here, what we've said so far, is we're excited, we want to get it moving. We know they, they don't have a meeting for a few more weeks down the road, so that's kind of the reason for us to move ahead, and, but we do, we do feel good about it, don't we? We feel good about it. So, I just want to say, I had a phone conversation on the way over here, talking to a gentleman from out of town, he said, "Oh, what do you guys have on the agenda?" I said, "Well, pretty light agenda." I said, "But we have one big thing," and told him about it, "It's Pet Care Campus." I said, "It's a new animal shelter." I said, he said, "Really?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "Actually, so we've got a Friends Animals Group, a local group, that's put together a lot of years' work, and a lot of money, and a lot of asking, and, and, and pushing, and, and just perseverance, and a lot of hard work." I said, "And they've drummed up a lot of money, a lot of land, a lot of donated labor." I said, "And honestly, it's a, it's a pretty big night for the council, because we get to help, finally. We get to help approve this." And I told him, I said, "Yeah." I said, "That's, I said, "It's pretty, pretty amazing we have a group of folks in our town that, that strive for that, and they got it done. They've gotten it done." And I said, "It really speaks volumes about, you know, the citizens of Cookville, Putnam County, the area, that have all pitched in to do this." And anyway, my hat's off to you guys. It's an honor to be able to say, "Yes, we want to do this." And I think we're all excited about it.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, guys, for coming. Mary, thank you from, I think Florida, maybe?
Yes, thank you, Mary.
Good. She said she wouldn't miss it, for anybody that couldn't hear. I even see some, some wet eyes back there. There's some people pretty passionate about this. But thank you for all your hard work. You guys have put in a tremendous amount of time, and, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, they're an inspiration to us.
By the way, we still, we'll accept donations.
Yeah. Please don't stop all that hard work.
Yeah, we're hoping the dirt moves, and it'll get new donations, and seeing it started.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I might, I'd just like to recognize that you've got a former shelter director that was involved in every stage of this here, Donna Herbert, and Matt McTeague, our current shelter director, and they're the ones that are there every day, so I wanted to recognize them.
We're excited to give you a new, a new home, or help. We didn't do it. You guys did this. We're excited to assist you with a new home, so. Anything from anyone? Would anyone like to? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Dottie, you need to go to the microphone. Could do like Phil Donahue and bring you the microphone.
I'd like to just say one thing, that I don't know how many people in this, well, we all know it, but I don't know how many other people in this audience know it, but three of our board members don't even live in Putnam County. And about, you know, about four or five other of the people who help us, who volunteer, don't either. They just happen not to live here, but they have made this their, their goal, to get this done, and I really think we need to offer them a whole lot of thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie.
My short time on the council, I've seen that when public and private can get together and work together, it's, it's hard to beat. It's really, well, you can't be beat.
They can't. Well, we're, I mean, we're just, we're just, I mean, I, one of the things I really appreciate about this council, and I'm really, I'm really upset that we're going to lose, we're going to lose a couple of members, is that we, we understand, we understand our relationship with the community, and the region, and the city. And we don't have, this, this council, the way I under, the way I see you guys, we don't have a whole lot of agendas. We just want to get things done, so we're not politicizing things. We just want to get things done. And I could have, I could have got up here and raised a big, a big red flag and said, "You know what? We need to wait, by gosh, because this is, we got citizens' money, taxpayers' money, it needs to be, you know, it's going to..." We just don't need to do that. I don't want to, and what, I, I just, I just appreciate all of these parts coming together. And I'm, well, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but I'm really disappointed we're going to lose a couple of members on this council, so I, I hope, I hope we can replace them with people that will see, will see the efforts of these folks, and see the whole, the big picture enough that we can get, we can continue to get things done. And one other, one other thing is that, sitting, being, being a long-time person that's watched the debt service funds, you know, bond funds, and the way they're run, this, this city is very lucky that we have administrators that have taken care of our, our bond fund, our debt service fund in such a way that we can afford to do this, okay? There's been some rough times in the recent past years, and we're still able to do this. And that, that is because of good stewardship from administrators in past councils, and I want to, I want to make sure that those folks are recognized, because I'm, I'm going to tell you, really, if we, if we were, if we were just, you know, on the fine line with just counting pennies, it would be tough to get this done. It would be tough to get this done. But because of, because of good folks that have done, been diligent in making sure that we get, we do the right things, we're able to do this. And I, my hat's off, because it makes, it makes my job a lot easier, and I, I just appreciate that. I'm, I'll shut up, sorry.
All right, anything else?
It's a big deal.
Thank you, guys, for contributing to the quality of life around here. It's big. All right. I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
That's a good feeling, isn't it?
Now for the hard part.
Are you ready to say bye?
I'm ready, I'm ready to celebrate.
You go do that, we'll finish the meeting.
Yeah, we're not going to let you celebrate in front of us if we can't do the same.
Bye, Mary.
Bye, Mary.
Thank you.
Mary, do you think that'd be on in snow?
Yeah, in case anybody watching on television thinks that we're crazy or not, we had, the architect was on webcam, FaceTime, from her vacation. She, she wanted to make sure she was present, as present as she could be, for this vote, so that's who we were talking to, it was the architect, for anybody out there watching.
Wasn't a fan of person.
Yeah.
Could have gotten a blow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, before you leave, I, I want to make one quick announcement while we have at least a little bit of an audience. I want, no, you don't have to sit down, this will take but a second. I wanted to point out, we have a new major in our police force, that is Major Bruce Lamb. So he has...
Where you at, Bruce?
Please stand up.
Congratulations, Bruce.
Wanted you guys to know that, so. Thank you.
Going to go have a drink.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Commission meeting in two weeks, three weeks. We'll take donations with a beer.
You ready, Ron?
I'm ready.
I'm set.
Consider authorizing city manager to enter into professional services agreement with Fraser &amp; Dieter CPA, to determine the customer acquisition costs of Double Springs Utility District customers in the, in the Cookville city limits. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight seeking council authorization for the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with the CPA, accounting firm of Fraser &amp; Dieter. The firm will provide professional services in determining the customer acquisition costs of the Double Springs Utility District customers that are located within the city limits of Cookville. What they will do is compute those acquisition costs, the value to the water department if we decide that it's economically feasible to do that. And we've also talked to them about looking at the, would it be economically beneficial for both parties, looking at their system as a whole? And so we've asked them to look at those costs, too. We negotiated a lump sum price of $16,000 with some out-of-pocket expensive cost on top of that, so I'm asking the council to authorize the city manager to, not to exceed price of $20,000. I've got a, in that area we're talking about, there's some areas along Buffalo Valley Road and Ridgedale that's out of the contract, the contract, those were early annexations in the 70s before we had a mechanism to try to get this done, accomplished. And so I've talked to the head of the board at Double Springs Utility District and met with him, and so they're receptive to looking at it all, because it would be, to leave that out, it's just going to create an island there. So we think hopefully we can get this done, and look at it, and see where we go.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. A motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I do have, I do have one question, Ronnie, I'm sorry, I didn't ask at the work session, but I did get a, I did get a question about this. You know, in the past, when we've annexed, when we've annexed areas, and we've had, we've had to move utility districts into the, into the fold of the city, that's, that's not went so well, okay? Or it's been, actually, not went so well, it's been, it's been costly. With, with the acquisition of the, this, this processional services agreement with Fraser &amp; Dieter, is that, is that going to help take care of some of the, you know, the potential legal issues that might come up with this, this process?
Well, we have a mechanism in the contract with Double Springs Utility District that was passed back in, I don't know, early 2000, that gave us a mechanism from that point forward, that we could, if the city annexed, there was a mechanism to do that, going through, accepting accounting practices and so forth. And we went through this before.
Okay.
And we never got to a resolution, and it was to the point that the council want to go to arbitration and then fight through it all, and at that point decided not to. But now with the annexation on out to the west, it was, let's look at it again, let's get, get some new numbers, and let's look at, because it's a big area now.
Right.
And let, and let's see, does it make economic benefits to our ratepayers to do that? Because you're going to have a lot of cost involved, upgrading facilities and, and that. And so we want to look at the cost.
What's the time to?
Before the first of the year. He'll have the information to us before the first of the year.
Well, the main thing you said is, they're receptive to this, and we're not going to go for it unless this is mutually beneficial to both of us.
Yes, I think that's what you've got to look at, the economics of it.
Right.
And then if you want to force the issue, there's a mechanism to force the issue. They're receptive, they know it's in the contract, just long as it's, I think, if they're receptive, if it's reasonable, and they feel like they're being treated and compensated, their customers compensated fairly also.
And we have reached out to them.
Oh, yes. I've talked, I've met.
Yeah, they're very aware of this.
Oh, yeah, I've talked to them, met with them first of the week.
Right, right.
And let them know this is going to be on the agenda. If they read on the paper, they would know what it is, and what we're doing, and so, yes, they're very aware of it.
Yeah, I just want everybody else to know that, when I just...
Well, I, I'm sorry I didn't bring this up in the, in the work session, but we, I just, this, this came up, the people were kind of, came up to me.
Yes, and some, some of the utility districts, we don't have a mechanism.
Right, yeah.
And so that, they're federally protected, their, their boundaries are federally protected, and so you can't just go in there.
Right.
But if these people are in agreement, and it's mutually agreeable, there shouldn't be any additional legal cost in that respect, it's just a question of how much is it going to cost based upon this formula to make the acquisition?
Yeah, okay. Very good, very good. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Guys, thank you.
Ronnie, I want to say thanks for doing this.
Yeah.
Thanks for, for having the forced thought to do this and think about this. Anything else? All right. I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 8, consider approval of agreement with WNO Construction Company relating to the water treatment plant project. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have an agreement before you tonight to authorize the city manager to enter into this agreement with WNO Construction on the water plant project. Basically, it's going to extend the contract through November 15, 2013. WNO will do the RFPs that are listed up there at a price of $21,000, and will be completed by November 15, 2013. It talks about taking, we're going, we're not going to need full-time inspection down there now, so it sort of addresses that issue, because they have reached substantial completion today, and we've got that notification. The city has, we've already adopted some of the RFPs, or accepted the prices on those without a time extension, and that makes it clear that we've agreed to do that, and they've accepted that. The new November 15 contract removes all issues of time that's associated with any of those, any of their requests for any additional time, and it sort of stops all of that disagreement. The agreement resolves all the issues between Cookville and WNO regarding liquidated damages for delays in the completion of the contract. That's also understood, and that the liquidated damage will begin to occur again if they haven't finished the remainder part that we needed to accomplish by November 15 deadline, and that all other remaining aspects of the contract are still in effect, and we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I guess I just, sorry, I just keep having comments with this stuff, but I just want to kind of give a, thanks to Jim, to Jim and Ronnie for negotiating this out. There were, there were some, an impasse that we reached, maybe, and I think, from what, as a council member in council with, with Ronnie and Jim, it sounded like that this impasse wasn't something a hurdle we couldn't, we couldn't take care of, and I always, I always feel like, as a council member that represents citizens, we need to be good neighbors, and it sounds like that we've, we've reached that goal. We've, we're, we're being good neighbors to this, this company that is, is Cookville-based and does a lot, a lot of work here, so I appreciate that. And the reason why I even say that, and just don't click my button and say, "Let's go on," is because in the recent past, we've not, we've just not had that. We've, we've had some, you want to get into it, we could talk about, we've had, we've had some issues with, with companies that have not fulfilled what we feel like is being good neighbors to us, and us being good neighbors, being good neighbors to us. So I, I want to thank WNO for their time in taking something that was mutually beneficial for, for both parties. And the other thing, too, is we still, we're kind of still holding them responsible, right? Isn't that right, Ronnie?
Oh, yeah, they're still, all provisions of the contract are still in effect.
So we're still being good stewards of our citizens' money, in that they're going, they're going to finish these, the, the parts of this contract and the work that needs to be done at our park. be done at our park in, in due time. And if they don't, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to, you know, you know, pony up.
Well, they've, yeah, and they've done, they've substantially completed the project. What they're doing now is some additional work that needs to be done that was peripheral to the project. So, yes, I, it's a good agreement for our ratepayers, and I would recommend your approval.
It's a win-win for both parties.
And that's always the best outcome.
Because that hasn't happened that recent, sometimes I feel like so. I appreciate that very much.
Anything else? Is there none?
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, this is the portion of our meeting where we like to hear from citizens and our delegations. We'll go out on a limb here, probably not gonna get that. Anything from the council?
I've got a few things. It's always interesting to see events that are coming up this weekend. Again, we're gonna have some events here in Cookeville, so it's not gonna be boring this weekend. Tomorrow night, Cookeville High School hosting Ray County. WCTE's having Blues, Blues and Brews over at Leslie Town Center. Saturday, we've got Bark in the Park over at the Allgood Park from eleven to three, so try to go out and see that. There is a art and music festival on Cedar Street. Picasso doesn't live here anymore. And with the Shakespeare in the Park, I almost forgot it.
Yeah, it starts tonight.
Starts tonight, it's this weekend, and I believe next weekend, and that's at Amphitheater at Dogwood Park, and I believe it starts at 7:00 PM. So, there's some activities to be done in Cookeville.
Well, Jim, it's funny that you mention that because last weekend, the City of Cookeville had the film in the park on Friday night, and that was free to the public. And then they did the museum walk, or I forgot, Night at the Museum, and that also was free to the public. And the West Side on Friday and Saturday night last weekend was just full. And then, starting tomorrow, we, they will begin having the concerts at the depot, and those are around the lunch hour, eleven, eleven-thirty, something like that. And people can take their brown bag and have a free concert for the next four Fridays. So, Cookeville is a happening place.
Well, and hey, one other thing, I just want to say thank you to my other council members. You guys just got back from a long day, right? Governor's Conference on Economic Development.
Right.
And I wasn't able to attend, and I really appreciate my other council members participating in that, gleaning information from the state, and, you know, hobnobbing and shaking hands to make sure that we're in the best position we can be to be on the governor's, on the governor's card as far as it goes to economic development in the state. So, thank you for guys being there. I couldn't be there, and I appreciate my council members doing what they're doing. No one sees that, there's no bells and whistles, there are no flags raised and saying, "Hey, here we are." But you guys did that, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, give a special recognition to Major Lamb. He's done a great job for the Cookeville Police Department for a long time, and this is a well-earned promotion for him, and I'm sure he'll do, continue to do a great job.
Yeah, Major Lamb, I wasn't trying to rush through that. I wanted to do it with an audience here, with at least somebody here, no offense to you guys, but at least with somebody else here. But congratulations, and we look forward to working with you for a few more years. Also, I want to say that I think tonight's a pretty big night. There's the, the animal shelter, the pet care campus is, you know, I think a lot of us, when we, when we decided to run, we, we talked about quality of life. It's not just dollars and cents all the time. It is a lot of times, but not all the time. And this is a quality of life issue, and I think it's, that's, that's also part of what makes this, this area special, very special. We have, we have groups like that come together with a passion for what they do, and they got, they just flat-out got it done.
Yeah.
And that's, that's amazing to see. It's amazing to see.
Well, the other side of the story, too, is that animal control is actually a big problem. And this facility basically doubles our capacity to house those animals. So, it's not just for the puppy dogs, it's also for the whole community.
Right.
To try to, to get a handle on the animal, animal problems.
But anybody else out there that has a passion for something like that, you know, you're not...
Bring this budget money.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring them some money, but also, if, if, there's another passion that you want to help with or get started, don't ever think, you know, you're too small or whatever. Yeah, we'll work with you.
We'll work with you, absolutely.
What's the old saying? If you think you're too small, try to go, go to sleep at night with a mosquito in the room?
Must be Overton County.
I was gonna say, that's a good way to end it, Matt.
Think about it.
Meeting adjourned.